Business meeting of the Gettysburg Planning Commission. It is March 17th, and we're convening this meeting at 7:00 PM. We are a group of five today. And we are absent our solicitor and John Rice, but we have Jenny Dumont here as our fifth member and voting member. Our agenda includes minutes from the February 18th meeting, public comment for items on the agenda, no table old business. One, well, actually, two items of new business, or those are actually old?
Item A is, it's, it's under new business. It's not necessarily a new topic of discussion for the commission. And then same with rezoning. The annual report was on last month's agenda, but was not discussed.
Okay, then we have three items of new business, Courtney Meadow, rezoning, and the 2024 annual report. Before announcements, additional comments from the planning commission, and a final round of public comment. Are there any corrections or changes to the agenda, or is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I seconded it.
There's a motion by Sarah and a second by Jenny. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. And the motion passes unanimously. We have an agenda. Are there any corrections to the February 18th, 2025 meeting minutes? Or is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Jenny moved and Sarah seconded. Any further discussion on our meeting minutes? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. And that motion passes unanimously.
Can I abstain from that vote because I was not here?
So we have four ayes and one abstention, and that is Nick Redman. Okay, it is now time for public comment on items related to our agenda. As we have received in previous meetings, we have some comments that were sent to us electronically, some with visuals. I would ask that if you are presenting for public comment, that you stick to your presentation without Q and A at this part. And once we get to that item on the agenda, we might ask our planning director to pull up any of those communications or maps so that we can refer to them. But for the public comment period to streamline that period, we won't be doing that then. But we will have the opportunity to perhaps ask a question or pull up those documented, but documents under the new business item in which it connects. So with that said, is there any public comment? Please come to the podium and state your name and address.
I'm Sue Sipperly. I live at 314 North Stratton Street. And my topic of concern is Carlisle Street mapping. And I do have a visual that I had sent in. We've been talking about this for a couple of meetings now. And John, are you getting my maps up?
I think we're going to wait until we actually get to that. So if you don't mind, could you speak to it without requiring that during public comment, but later when we discuss it?
I misunderstood your directions. Well, I took a look at the, the proposal was to do away with the residential office zoning on Carlisle Street. And make it all residential, but take some of those uses, like funeral homes and motels and things, and put them into the residential zone. And after looking at the zoning map that exists currently, the arrangement just didn't make sense. For instance, on Carlisle, there's a row of three single-family homes facing Carlisle. Two of them are zoned R2 and the other one's zoned R1. And then there was a better way to do it, and without the visual, it's kind of hard to describe. But I, I was proposing that we extend. One of the issues was the future of those former motel buildings. And I suggested that we extend the residential office zoning to that one motel property, former motel property, because the uses are all similar. So I guess we'll get to that later. But then I took and then make everything to the east R2, which it is right now. Then I took a look at all the uses that are currently in the residential office district, which applies currently to Baltimore Street. I compared all of those. And Baltimore Street now has become more of a, it's called NC2 historic, which is neighborhood commercial. But they added in some sort of touristy things there, such as more drinking opportunities, tattoo parlors, pawn shops, and chuck cashing. That didn't seem appropriate for Carlisle Street. But what I did was created what I thought was a reasonable list of uses that would make use of those large buildings on Baltimore and sort of also be compatible with the adjoining neighborhood. So you guys have had this via email. But I would suggest not putting commercial uses into R2, funeral home, motel, bed and breakfast, and fraternities. They compete with the people who are looking for housing. And also, why should the R1 single-family zone be the only district without any commercial uses? R2 has a lot more options as far as building types and more rentals. This would also make the rezoning agree with the joint comprehensive plan with regard to the Carlisle Street and residential area. So I guess we'll get to this later. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Sipperly. I just wanted to assure you that your visuals and everything have been received by every member of planning. And any member is able to ask to show, to see those when we discuss this on the agenda. Thank you. Are there any other residents who wish to give public comment? Okay, seeing none, let's move to SLD 25001, Courtney Meadow Railroad Street.
Good evening. As discussed last month with the acceptance, this is a minor subdivision for the borough as it affects a very small portion of property within the borough. The majority of the subdivision is occurring in Strabane Township. This is the final plan, so it is a ministerial action by the planning commission to enable the signature on the plaque. Chad can speak more to the previous approvals for the project and specific concerns related to potentially to the borough and its residents.
So as John said, this is a final subdivision plan. And let me just, without getting too far into weeds, just give you a quick lesson on subdivision plans. So there really isn't, the way I'd like to think of it, there's not a difference between a preliminary and a final land development plan. A land development plan is the approval. So essentially, a year and a half ago, this plan came through and it got a preliminary subdivision and land development plan approval. So it's been approved. They've already started construction. So at this point, you really can't change anything in terms of the lot lines. That's all this plan is doing at this point is formalizing and monumentalizing the, the lot lines with the subdivision. It's a final subdivision plan. Again, the land development, if you can see on the top of the plan there, there's no word land development. That has already been approved. That ship's already sailed. So some of the comments you might have seen from our comment letter from a year and a half ago is water under the bridge at this point. The only one that remains outstanding is the property corners. So I did issue just today a new letter to John, just so that he has a comment letter in his file that the property corners in the borough still need to be set. Like John said, it's a really tiny, small little sliver that's in the borough even. So there's like two property corners that need to be set. I did check with Bob Share, the surveyor, earlier today, and they hadn't been set yet. So he said that he'll get them set, shouldn't be in any issues. So should you be so inclined to grant a conditional approval, I would make that a condition of your approval. Just for, to add a little flavor to the overall development scheme in the borough here, and this is kind of a side note because again, there's really nothing you can do at this point to deny this plan. But I wanted to, to let you know that, that they have made some strides. There was a traffic impact study, a traffic impact assessment fee assigned to this project that is going to be put towards some of the improvements there out toward the Route 30 York Street intersection. When we talked about this a year and a half ago, we talked a lot about the western half and the northern half of this, I should say, where the Gettysburg Trail connects. And there wasn't really too much towards where the railroad tracks are out to Route 30. But that is still largely at play with the Mark Gettysburg development as well. We have received some updates for the traffic impact study for the Mark Gettysburg development. That's the everything on the east or the south side, southeast side of Route 30. So that's still at play, all those connections to that side. They're working on getting FEMA approval to cross the tributary to Rock Creek that's associated with this Courtney Meadows plan. So there will be pedestrian access over to, what is that, Hunterstown Road? So there will be a connection there that'll greatly improve that, the circulation, pedestrian circulation in that area. So steps have been made to the good for pedestrian circulation, traffic circulation. We don't have any major concerns from the borough standpoint at this point. But I did want to let you know, you know, just from the periphery, that there are still some things at play there that are, that are going to improve the traffic in that area.
Okay, so just to remind the commission, last month, we accepted this plan for review. And then we have these 90 days. However, we can approve today. We can approve with conditions, or we can reject. And so given our engineers' comments before that, John, do you have any additional comments?
No, this is generally a ministerial act. The, even the condition, I mean, it has to be completed to the satisfaction of the court's office for recordation. So it have to, it has to meet professional surveyor standards. So if you're, if you're a little squeamish about the condition, that, that would be something that would have to happen. But by putting the condition into play now, onto paper, it's something we can convey to the engineer and have a completed plan for signature ready probably within a week.
Is this a plan where there's someone here to represent this?
Not today.
Okay.
Yeah, I talked to Bob Share earlier today. He asked me if, if he should be there. And I said, I don't know if I feel a need for him to be here, seeing that none of it's really in the borough.
All right, then with that, are there any questions from the planning commission, or is there any motion? And the motion would be to approve, approve with condition, reject, table, I suppose could be a fourth.
I'm sorry, just for the wording of the motion, can you, how would you describe the condition?
I would word the motion, motion to conditionally approve the final subdivision plan for Courtney Meadows, conditioned on the setting of property corners within the borough.
I would move to approve the plan for Courtney Meadows, condition on property setting within the borough. Or also what Chad said to be more specific, if you want to put that in the minutes. I mean, and I guess I'll wait for a second.
Okay, so Nick moved, motion to approve with the condition of the Courtney Meadow, did you say the corner?
Property corners.
Apartment corners.
Property corners, yeah, property.
Property corners. Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, I heard Marty first, Jenny, so. Nick moved and Marty seconded. Is there any discussion?
I have a question, just for future reference, if there was some other parcel down the road. I understand that, you know, nothing being developed is in the borough in this case. But if there was some future parcel, and I think in this case too, there are natural features that don't allow kind of a orderly growth from the borough. But say there was some parcel like this, and we don't like the cul-de-sacs, and we want them to extend the road grid or something from the borough. If it was really mostly in Strabane Township, could we say no to a subdivision plan, even though it wasn't mostly impacting, or really impacting anything in the borough?
You, you could say no. If the solicitor was here, he would explain why you shouldn't say no. And long and short of it is, a subdivision is a unique action. It's, if you meet the requirements, you have to approve it. If there are concerns with the land development that's happening, happening outside of the borough, that's when usually lawyers get involved because it's one corporate, we're, we're two different corporations at that point. And so it's not something where the borough, unless there's an express ability to regulate that land, there, there would be a challenge. And that, that's usually not going to be something that would be beneficial or, I guess, a hindrance either way to the development.
Thank you for that. I also just wanted a reminder, I remember like your note from, your comments from 2022. The one thing that it does mention, I think, relates to the borough is the pedestrian access, I think on York Road, you say. Was that something, is that the kind of thing that we could push for when this kind of thing comes up? Saying we want more pedestrian access or sidewalks connecting from Strabane Township to the borough?
Yeah, I think push for is, is, is the right, right term there. Because I would tend to agree with what John's response was there, that to, to recommend denial of the plan would be, would be tough. Certainly, a push for those kinds of things, I think, is, is something that I would welcome. If there is, really the only reason why you would be able to deny it is if there was a negative impact. Like if they were building something that was cutting a designated trail surface or trail route off that already exists, and it would be a detriment to the borough, then that would be grounds for, for denial. Or if they had a traffic impact study, like one of the things that came up, you can remember from that, from that letter, was that we wanted to see if there was going to be any impacts to the borough at Sixth Street, Fifth Street, and the, and the traffic signal at Fourth Street. And they came back with, no, there's no significant impacts. So if there was an impact to the borough, then yes, you could say, okay, we can recommend denial of this plan because of this impact until they mitigate those impacts. But if there's not a negative impact, if it's just solely because you want to have those kinds of things, it's more of a should than a shall, I would have to, I would have to say.
Okay, thanks.
Chad, with the, you brought up traffic impacts. I'm just curious, how do they determine if it's significant or not? What's, what's the?
Yes, so they hired a traffic engineer, John Schick's the guy's name. We've done a lot of traffic engineering with him over the years from R2. And they have to do an analysis. They had to do a study to see if, they have to get an HOP from the state. So they had to go through the whole process with a state pretty thick traffic impact study. And they had to determine what kind of improvements they needed to do to get the approval from PennDOT essentially. And then those traffic impacts were also reviewed by the neighboring townships. So those traffic impact studies would show if there was a, there's, there's a couple of indicators on what PennDOT considers significant. For instance, if you add 10 seconds to the delay in the traffic signal, then they make you do improvements. That's one of the indicators. There's a lot of different things that PennDOT looks at, but that's one of the ones that's, the more commonly known ones is if you, if, if the new development will add 10 seconds, then you have to mitigate.
Seconds at any time of the day?
And they look at peak, peak times. Yeah, they usually study the peak times, which are the worst-case scenario. So that's right rush hour in the morning and the afternoon, two times a day is typically. It's, it's not always peak times for some facilities or at other ti, you know, weekends or whatever. But typically, it's, it's in the morning and the afternoon. In this case, the impact to the signal, like say at Fourth Street, is largely existing traffic, through traffic, they would call it in the study here. That's already on Route 30. So this development had insignificant change to that, and it did not change more than 10% of what already is happening. Or I'm sorry, more than 10 seconds from what's already happening. So they would have looked at those kinds of things. That's, that's, that's what they go through.
And the number of lots on this?
Probably on a title sheet there, John. I don't know if you can zoom in. I don't know the number off the top of my head. I guess. While John's looking for the, the biggest number on that sheet there, you can also see that everything that's, the dark gray is in this phase that is being, is being approved today. There's the, an additional phase that's going to come back to you guys supposedly in the near future.
And they're all single-family, correct?
Yes, yeah, and it's 100, 100.
151 building lots.
So 151 lots, no traffic impact on Gettysburg.
One of the ways they're able to accommodate for that is having multiple access points to state roads. So you, when you're putting a traffic study together, you're going to push for as many availabilities to, to say you're going to potentially reduce traffic load as well.
Yeah, when you start, you, you can really dilute track. So you can say out on Old Harrisburg Road, they can go two different directions. And then on Hunterstown Road, they can go two different directions. And then on Route 30, they can go, and then on Sixth Street. Until you get to the traffic signal at Fourth Street, it's so diluted that there's not a whole lot of traffic, you know, out of this development compared to what's already existing on Route 30.
I mean, it is close to Gettysburg, so I imagine one might walk to Gettysburg, but probably not. They'll probably be driving.
Yeah, and, and again, that, if you want to scroll up there again, John, the, what, the, I'll call it the northern or the western side, that Eagle Drive there does connect to the North Gettysburg Trail, Old Harrisburg Road. So that has sidewalks that directly connect to the borough, to the high schools, just a little bit further north there.
Thank you, Chad.
Sure.
Any further comment? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let's call for a vote. All those in favor of accepting this plan with the condition, please say aye. Aye, opposed. That motion passes unanimously. We now turn to rezoning. I just wanted to make a brief comment that this is the 10th meeting that this planning commission has devoted to the deep discussion of the rezoning effort. We received the document from our planning director, Whitmore, on May 15th, 2024. We had a very preliminary meeting, well, we had a meeting on May 20th, 2024. But we only, at that meeting, planned out how we were going to tackle this. That plan has changed a couple of times over the last year as we That plan has changed a couple of times over the last year as we heard feedback from the community, as we did our own research, as we listened to the comments related to this from the consultant. But it was at the June meeting of 2024, June 17th, that we first started to tackle our responses to this plan and any suggested amendments or changes. So what we do today is to have our 10th meeting on this. At our last meeting in February, it was very productive. However, we made so many suggested changes that it was the idea of the solicitor and the planning director to take those changes, to add them into the document and bring it back to us for review. And I turn it over now to John Whitmore to walk us through what you had in mind for this part of the agenda.
Yeah, so good evening with, yeah, with the changes, we just wanted to make sure we were on the right path before going through the process of having a resolution drafted and providing that information to council. Overall, with regards to the, the agenda as we have it set up, first, going over the zoning map changes. As you can see, this was the proposed map at that February meeting. Changes specifically identified for the Carlisle area in addition to Paxton Hall. So working with the contractor, we were able to have the map updated accordingly. This indicate, this is the location currently of the RO district with a slight exception that I'll point out. The larger parcel at West Stevens, the current zoning map actually has this as a split parcel right there. So this is RO, this area being the R2. What we're proposing is the entire parcel being NC1 and keeping it with the RO district and not having split parcels. Paxton Hall has been updated, it was previously R1, now it will be R2 as requested. There was still, I guess, question regarding best practices for West Middle Street.
John, speak into the microphone, please.
Okay, yeah. With regards to the parcels along Middle Street, the church parcel, the other business parcels are on that street. We didn't change that, we can go with a NC1 for those areas as well if it's a consensus of the planning commission. So that would be these larger parcels. Believe that one as well. Now, in instances where it's spot, that would maybe be challenging, we would probably be able to stretch it. So that's why we, we just kept it with the R2 as that one wasn't quite as firm as a commitment to the, as, as it was to the commitment to the changes to Carlisle. Yeah, so at this point, if there's any questions, concerns, suggestions for the maps, that would love to hear.
I was sort of under the impression that Middle Street was NC1 and Carlisle, we didn't change.
That's what I recall from that meeting as well.
We approved our minutes, which said Carlisle Street, so.
Oh. I'm certain that that's what we did and I'm sorry that I missed that as we approved our minutes. John, you have a different recollection?
I, yeah, I mean, we, we had it as Carlisle Street, changing that to keep it in the RO. I mean, we can, we can go, we can change, okay, so what we can do, we can, we definitely, we definitely had, the planning commission definitely had a discussion regarding Paxton Hall being R2. That change isn't a problem. We can revert these pink parcels along Carlisle to the R2 district. Additionally, then with regards to Middle Street, I guess, is it the board's intention then for the entire corridor to be NC1 or to have a different designation for select parcels?
I think let's start by looking at the minutes again, which we've approved, but is there, our solicitor is not here. Is there any way to unapprove our minutes?
So, yeah, we can do that. What you're able to do, minutes are just a record, they can be changed either at a later date or if you'd like to revise them at this time and re-vote, you would, you do have the ability to. We don't have like firm Roberts Rule of Order, so it's, it's something that you can go back on if you'd like.
Could those who are here join Marty and me in trying to recollect? I'm rather certain that we made a decision or came to a consensus on Middle Street, but that we actually did not come to a consensus on a lot of the comments that Ms. Sipperly has made related to Carlisle, but that we might have been wanting to return to that today. And what Marty?
That's what I recall, there was a vote even, Sarah was against the NC1.
On Middle.
On Middle, but we, but we passed that.
But it was passed, right, so not a consensus.
Not a consensus, I'm sorry.
That's okay. But I thought we did make some change to Carlisle.
Would it just been the hotel or the college? It was zoned as a, um, single family. We changed it.
I'm not seeing a paragraph, let's start with Middle Street maybe. I'm not seeing a paragraph in the minutes to reflect that discussion and I apologize a lot that I did not notice this. Would, would you be able to recheck the recording from that meeting?
Yeah, we can go over the materials again and provide revised minutes to the planning commission at the April meeting.
So without that being certain, it's, it's clear that that hasn't happened on West Middle. So I guess we need a pathway here to either suggest that that happens or revise that recommendation right now. If anyone has changed their mind on that.
The reason I'm in favor of NC1 is because it offers more opportunities for housing, more types of housing. So, and I, I think of all the places where you would potentially want to do development, it would be on West Middle as opposed to Carlisle. So I would prefer the change to be on West Middle as opposed to Carlisle, which I think you're sort of stuck with the structures. I think those aren't gonna, the structures aren't going to change, the uses might.
And my argument, just to throw that out there for Nick who wasn't here maybe, was that, I was using the same logic for Carlisle and Middle, that the built environment in those places seems to me to be more neighborhood commercial than, than residential. But with the knowledge that residential is permitted in the tourist neighborhood commercial district. So walking down West Middle, as Marty said, those structures are commercial and balancing the uses and the structures with the ones that are clearly residential, my reaction was that it's more of a neighborhood commercial street than it is a residential. And I was making the same argument about Carlisle, but let's wait on that one if you don't mind, just resolve this first. But I recall that there was enough that supported Carlisle, but not enough. And in fact, I raised it on, I mean, a, a lot that supported West Middle, but not that supported Carlisle, which is why we didn't move on that one.
Yeah, I feel like the built environment is what it's going to be on Carlisle. So we can talk about uses, but I, I don't think the built environment on Carlisle is going to change that much.
So this is different than when you were at the last meeting, when we talked about West Middle, I think.
We talked about it briefly, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, my, my only comment is more of a, I mean, this, the entire process, I feel like there's been what I would call commercial creep. I mean, we, as part of the initial group meeting about rezoning, and I think one of the directives from the council was to increase housing opportunities. And slowly but surely, more and more business opportunities, commercial uses have been injected into some of these neighborhoods. I mean, NC1 allows for a lot of business uses. I mean, there are some specific uses like bed and breakfast and inns and drinking establishment and eatery. And then it also allows general commercial use, which is like 50 some odd uses for commercial. And so I think my concern when looking at this map particularly more than a block out of the square, along West Middle potentially as NC1 is, you know, given the competition, when people are selling properties between commercial and residential, you know, commercial always can outbid and outbuy people, families, right? And so my concern generally with NC1 is that yes, it does provide housing opportunities, although I don't know that it provides any more than R2. I think it provides manufactured home community seems to be the one that it provides, or actually R2 provides that and it doesn't. But generally, my concern with NC1 is just that, you know, anytime there's an open property on Middle Street then, or anywhere else we've made NC1, a commercial property is going to grab that, right? And, and turn into what they want to turn it into rather than a home. And so again, I, I will happily go with the consensus of this group, you know, if, if it's, you know, three to two, four to one, whatever it might be, but I mean, that would just, I, I know I'm reiterating what I've said before, but if we're opening the discussion again, I just feel the need to say that.
And I think as we've done in previous meetings, our votes on this are not binding votes. It's not like accepting a subdivision or land development plan, so we have moved. So even though it's not captured in the minutes, I, it would be great to get them accurate and then redo them. But I don't think that holds us to that decision last month. So let's perhaps get to a vote or a consensus right now on this. Are we asking John to do what I thought we did last month? Or are we asking him to keep it as is on West Middle Street? I'll, I'll give my argument in a second, but I think others should speak.
Well, in my opinion, for NC1, it's defined by, and, and it might be, you know, this commercial creep, but it's generally first floor commercial and above is housing. I think that's a, a successful model, that's here in Gettysburg and a lot of communities. I think it gives homeowners the opportunity to both have business and housing at the same time. And so that's, that's what I like about NC1 and it seems to work, so.
So we have Nick and Marty, Jenny or Sarah, any comments on this?
I think that NC1 fits with the character of that neighborhood, the way it traditionally has been, the mix of different things and I'm less concerned, I, I recognize Nick's comment about commercial creep, but in this particular area, I'm less concerned with it.
I don't think my opinion has changed on this one.
And my opinion is that I totally appreciate this call for more residential, of course. And I also understand that was the charge of the committee and of all of that work. I do though wonder, Nick, if that was the concern, how have we gotten to a place where commercial has been added into residential too? To the kind of comments that Ms. Sipperly's been making.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm a, I mean, from my perspective, we, we, in the original conversation, when both East Middle, or I'm sorry, West Middle and Carlisle were kind of called out as not allowing as much, and, and Ms. Sipperly brought up the idea of kind of particularly for Carlisle, maybe having some other uses there because a lot of our commercial uses were, were more southern part of town and we wanted to see some commercial use up there. And so, I mean, what, I think what I struggle with is, is to me, I see a large gap between R2 and NC1. R2 was very limiting with what commercial uses you could have, right? There was a few kind of like residential office, things like that. But, you know, general commercial was not allowed and, and other things were not allowed. But then NC1, from my understanding of looking at the use chart, really, again, I don't see a huge difference between NC1 and NC2 other than potentially these specificity on kind of, is it a business reserved for, kind of directed towards cars? Or is it a business, you know, directed towards people? But other than that, if you look at the usage map for NC1, or the usage chart for NC1, there's not a lot that is disallowed in NC1 that's allowed in NC2 and NC3. And so to me, I just saw a very large gap between R2 and NC1. And, and I think in my, my comment in my absence last meeting, I think in my ideal world, there's a, there's another zone that would potentially address that, that would, you know, not be R2, but be closer to R2 in terms of mostly residential, some commercial. But I think there's been a conversation around, do we add more zones? And I think the consensus was no, you know, that kind of just adds confusion and adds more complexity. And so that was why I was pushing for some commercial use within R2, particularly what Marty was describing, specifically these mixed-use buildings where it's, you know, a business on the first floor and residential on the second floor, specifically also defined as 51% residential, right, and 49% commercial. To try to preserve the residential character of some of these neighborhoods in R2 while allowing for some limited business use in those areas. You know, again, I feel like, you know, it's tough because we don't, we don't sit and have like a kind of a clear vision on this sometimes. It's just through a series of conversations over a series of, of meetings once a month and they kind of morph sometimes where you don't necessarily intend them from that first conversation. But I mean, that to me is why I was kind of pushing for, rather than reclassification of those areas, slightly increased commercial use in R2. But I do understand the concern that, you know, there are other areas that are too, that are truly more residential and, and there could be concern with some businesses moving in there. Again, I don't know the perfect solution to that, but I think that's kind of why I was pushing for the, the rationale that I was suggesting, but, you know, again, everyone, you know, I'm, I'm, other people have other thoughts and I completely respect that.
I want to make sure that we're all looking at the same use chart. Would you mind pulling it up? The document I have looks a little different from the one you're looking at. Because we, the one that I have shows that we have eliminated general commercial mixed-use building from R2, NC1, NC2, NC3, GC, OT, REV.
Is that on the website? So revised draft was provided, this goes into part two of tonight regarding rezoning. The use charts, yeah, here we go. Okay, so as proposed from last month's meeting, we have changes to
There, yeah, that's the one I'm looking at.
General commercial mixed-use building, removing it as a land use.
Right, but so I think, and that's, I'm, I'm very confused to be completely honest because Marty, you just mentioned this idea in NC1 of a mix between commercial and residential, which I wholeheartedly agree with. I don't see a use for that anywhere. I thought that's what commercial mixed-use building was.
Well, no, you, you're able to have multiple principal uses on a parcel in Gettysburg. So you can have the commercial, that's how we're able to have mixed-use buildings by default without having a specified use. The idea for the general commercial mixed-use building was initially proposed by staff late last year as it related to the concern with R2 district. Historically, there was opportunities for businesses on the first floor, but if they're in R2, they're not eligible for those commercial uses. So that's why we had the special exception process established for that land use in R2. It was further expanded to other districts as there was confusion from the community. This was related to the planning commission. This is one of those land uses in particular that when we start tinkering, trying to, trying to change the zoning dis- zoning district without having necessarily the necessity for it, it creates some other externalities further down the line. So one of the problems we were having is we were receiving questions and concerns specifically from Gettysburg College as it relates to the land use and concern that it would limit their ability to utilize their properties as mixed use as they're currently permitted. It was a, yeah, very, very long conversation, but ultimately staff recommended the removal of land use from the document as the request from the planning commission at last month's meeting was to revert to the prior R2 limited commercial uses as provided in the current zoning ordinance.
So to the point that I think Nick was asking and Marty said, is there anything about NC1 that encourages mixed use more than R2?
Well, so with R2, you, you're only really permitted to do office uses. Even then, the NC1 district. Even then, the NC one district, the mixed-use districts allow for those general commercial land uses. So very large amount of retail type of uses. I believe you're also allowed to do restaurants to a certain extent. But, you know, there's more opportunity clearly with NC one as proposed now by removing that land use. And then we also recommended the removal of funeral homes as a special exception in the R two district. I believe that's all the changes that were provided.
So that we can know what we're talking about related to the potential change from R two, which I believe there might be three people here, or maybe four, would be amenable to, but maybe not. Could you just show us where, with the map, which parcels we're recommending here, going from yellow to pink, R two to NC one? And then maybe we could also look at the other pink NC ones in the borough, which might help to see if we think those zones are, that district is like the district we're proposing here. Which is, I think, where we started last month. So I think we were saying from the general commercial at Bream Alley all the way to Hay Street? Is that correct, Marty? Is that what you recall, or anybody who was here? On the one side of West Middle?
I mean, that would be in keeping with discussions that were had last month. I just didn't have it as it was consensus for that area.
I see. And this is not staff's recommendation, just so we're clear?
No, staff's recommending this, the area specifically designed as such, given the impacts that have happened with the Elm Street overlay and the business creep that's happened associated with that desire to have more housing opportunities in the structures that are designed for housing along this, along this corridor.
And John, just so
Historic district.
We have all these arguments on the table. How do you respond to Marty's argument, which is that side of West Middle has structures in it that have long been commercial and they're built for commercial, not for residential?
So from a planning perspective, they're currently legal pre-existing non-conforming land uses. Zoning ordinance attempts to have conformity. So these properties, eventually, the idea would be that they're, would become housing.
Do you have anything to add?
The only thing that I would have to add is if you're going to make a decision that may be inconsistent with the minutes that you approved, I would recommend that you would make a vote to supersede that previous decision to approve the minutes and table them for now until you have a chance to revisit and look at the record and set the record straight. That way, you don't have conflicting decisions now and from previous. So, but aside from that, I don't have any specific recommendations to the topic at hand, no.
So you're asking, you're suggesting that let's just have a motion now to table the minutes?
To supersede the previous motion, approving it, instead table the minutes until you have a chance to review the record.
But we can still make our recommendation without that.
Separate, yeah, separate thing.
All right, well, John, is that all right?
Yeah.
All right, well, let's take care of that item of business. Would anyone make a motion to supersede our recent approval of the minutes and instead table them for our April meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so Sarah moved and Marty seconded. Any discussion on this? Everyone understand what we're doing? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, then let's return to this. Yes?
Just want to confirm if Mr. Redmond has abstained yet.
I don't feel any, I mean, I abstained originally because I was not here, so I couldn't tell what was talked about, but I agree with the idea that we can table the minutes and do that.
Okay, so back to the item at hand related to this stretch of West Middle. I mean, I think initially in the process, I was motivated by the fact that it was a suggestion by a committee that studied this for a while, and then that it moves from R one to R two, which seems like a nice progression of residential districts. But then I walked this a couple times and looked at those structures and heard what Marty had said about those buildings most likely not changing, and trying to balance that with the desire to have a difference set up there. And then just concluded that I, maybe like Jenny said, don't have a nervousness about it. Do the neighbors in that area have a nervousness? I don't know. So that is kind of an unknown about the houses that do exist there, the residential properties. Do they see that street? Do they use that street as residential and see it as expanding? Or do we use that side of the street as commercial? And I still think, as this gateway out of the borough which hits the potential new library and the Y, that it seems to me that commercial is not inappropriate there. So I think I'm staying with that.
I don't feel incredibly strongly about keeping this as R two versus NC one, but part of it is, I wanted to ask about the inclusion in NC one of all the residential or neighborhood districts of electronic cigarette vaporizer store, smoking places. I can't remember why that was the one residential-ish district we would have kept that in, whereas it's otherwise only located in general commercial in Old Town. Do you remember why we did that? Anyone recollect? I would, if we are going to change, I mean, I would think NC one, being a neighborhood commercial, could exclude that use. We have a number of these stores already in, I think, Old Town and general commercial They seem to be great at reusing buildings. And so I would think that it seems like, I mean, maybe we've maxed out with our saturation of them, but it seems like that would be a business that maybe wouldn't be neighborhood-friendly.
I agree.
I agree too.
Let's get rid of it.
Is that, in your opinion, going to affect other NC districts in a way that we would not want?
Well
Other parts of the NC district?
You're going to receive complaint most likely from existing businesses that may be operational in that realm. I'd have to, I'd have to go out and check and see if there'd be any existing businesses impacted that would then become a non-conforming use. I mean, it's not something unusual for that specific type of use to have it limited. So staff can make that change relatively easily.
But there, let's just do this one by consensus, if there is consensus. Are there any objections to removing that from the NC one? We're talking about electronic cigarette vaporizer store and smoking places. Okay, that is our consensus then. No, we haven't decided. It seems like we are deciding that we would ask you to change that.
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any, I mean, I think what I heard you say is that, given the Elm Street overlay, and are you speaking about impacts like event venue?
Well, just in general, the Elm Street overlay was successful. It was a little too successful, so that's why, my understanding is when the steering committee was reviewing this specific area, that interplay with maintaining residential was something that was very important.
Okay, well, unless someone has changed their mind since John has spoken, it sounds to me that we've reached consensus of NC one for this stretch of West Middle with an elimination of that particular use, electronic cigarettes.
I would not be in consensus with that.
Okay, so not consensus, so I'm sorry, I keep using that word. Let's just then have a vote so it's recorded. All those in favor of making this change, please say aye.
What's the
I'm sorry.
Street to street?
From Bream Alley to Hay Street is what I thought, unless someone believes it should be a shorter distance, like from South Reynolds to South Hay, but then that creates a very small section of R two, which doesn't seem to be good. Well, I think we were only saying the north side of the, I mean, the, just that side. John, given what we're saying here, do you, you know, I know that this isn't staff's recommendation, but given this direction, would you recommend a certain section of this that would be more appropriate than others?
In recollection, most of the, I mean, it makes sense to a certain extent to have both sides of the street, given the fact that there are, the arguments that there are these existing structures that are more conducive for commercial land use. There's, I mean, we also have had recommenda, requests from the property owners to the south side.
Can you show us the church parcel?
I believe it's this very large one right here. And a few of the smaller ones.
I mean, it's, you've got the church parcel, you've got that, it's like gravestones, I apologize, I don't remember the name.
Kadoris.
Kadoris next to it. And then a little bit further down, you have a couple of foot specialists.
Okay.
And then you have Adams County National Bank. I mean, from my knowledge, and then I think there's one business on the north side, along West Middle, that is like, it looks like a home, and I always think it's a home, but it's like signs or something. But the rest, I mean, are all houses. Yeah, that's the one. So certainly, like, the church property and Kadoris, I mean, yeah, those definitely look.
That makes sense, yeah.
Those are the most commercial looking, but like, I mean, you can tell just by the property line.
Right.
And the rest are all, they're not big lots.
Yeah, it's, it's like, from, what is the, I can't tell which street that is, the one beyond Reynolds?
That's Ridge Avenue, that's my street.
Oh, Ridge, okay. So from between Ridge and Reynolds on one side, that's where the residential's are on that side. On the other side, though, you have the Kadoris, right?
I'm sorry, that's Howard, I apologize.
Or Howard, Howard and Reynolds. And then that's Kadoris there at the corner of Reynolds and West Middle, is that right?
Yeah, that's, that's Kadoris.
from Plank Alley on one side and from Bream Alley on the other to Hay being NC one?
It may make sense, if you were to do that, to exclude this portion right here as it is, it's built towards the other roadway.
Oh, right.
So staff can provide you with a changed map. We can, you know, we can have one where we've consolidated all the commercial properties into the zone and minimize residential, if that's the direction that the planning commission would like to give staff, and we can get back to you with that next month.
What do you mean by minimize residential?
Minim, so minimizing, we can provide you with a zoning district in this location that's just as much of just having commercial properties, or if we want to have a more expansive one, either way, we can provide those maps to the planning commission for review at next month. If there are, we can also provide additional options to provide a block-by-block analysis. It sounds, from what I'm hearing, though, Plank Alley seems to be one of the more natural buffer points for this discussion, and so we can go from there and provide you with options.
We do have, I imagine, two objections to that, Nick and Sarah, and then three positives. Okay, thank you. Marty, is that okay? With the idea that it wouldn't be too cumbersome to still vote next month, for the recommendation as you've outlined?
We can, we can provide the imaging, and we can, we can provide a method for the planning commission to have an approval. Depending on how the commission would like to go with the final map, that's something we can, we can work into the recommendation or the resolution. So yes, we can do that.
All right, and then please note that that was forwarded with a three-two vote. Now, I think we should take a vote on eliminating the NC one. I don't believe we've done that. I mean, eliminating the
Yeah, let's do it.
Electronic cigarette, et cetera, from NC one. So would somebody move that, please?
I'll make a motion to remove, I don't have it up in front of me, sorry.
Electronic cigarette vaporizer store and smoking place.
From NC one, thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion, Sarah moved and Nick seconded that motion, is there any discussion on removing those, that use from the NC one? Then all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, so that one is clear. The other one, there's still something we should see at the April meeting. And we'll also return to the minutes over that, too. All right, now then, let's go to that other part of the map, the Carlisle area, where you have made a change. And I thought at that meeting that, in fact, there wasn't enough votes for this. I thought really it was only me that was for this change, but please, anyone else jump in?
Right, so the way I remember it is, we got rid of the general commercial uses, and that was going to be added to the R two area. And we felt that Middle Street was more worthy, I suppose, of some of these business opportunities, whereas the Carlisle Street area did not seem as conducive, so we left it at R two.
Yeah, okay.
But, you know, I'd be interested to hear if any, anyone has any ideas there. I just don't see the built environment changing there. The houses that are there seem to be there. So this would be more about uses. Certainly, somebody could take down one of those houses, I suppose, but I just don't see it happening.
We've received this feedback from Ms. Ciprilli several times, and I think the argument has been about uses and whether the uses in the R two are too flexible.
Well, we removed the general commercial, so, and the funeral home, I believe.
We did, yeah, funeral home has been eliminated.
And so it is just straight R two, but I think Sue wants more commercial opportunities there, that's what.
Right, by eliminating funeral home, general commercial, office use is by special exception. Are there any other commercial use permitted in the R two currently?
Just that, like wireless.
Wireless communication. So just for the record, the only uses on our current draft for commercial in the R two include wireless communication, which is, I guess, a requirement in all districts?
Not necessarily, it's, well, yes, for the
It's the right away, yeah, public right away. Office use by special exception.
Hotel and
Hotel.
Bed and breakfast by special exception.
Oh, yes, and hotel and bed and breakfast by special exception. But, correct, therefore, keeping it in R two would limit some of the commercial uses that might have a possibility of thriving in a large Victorian home.
Well said, yes.
I still support that idea. I still think it could be possible that those homes
They can still
Become more than residential because it seems unrealistic to think of them being non-college residential.
They can go through the process if they want.
Of, I mean, of variants.
Yeah.
What do others think?
I, I mean, coming into this process, I felt personally that it should be more residential and was okay with the definition of R two, kind of how it is now. I think through some comments, including Ms. Ciprilli's, I was convinced that there could be potential for some low-impact commercial uses, kind of down there, thinking of the idea of, you know, coffee shops, things like that, understanding that, yes, a lot of that is now concentrated kind of south along Carlisle. But that's where I think, then I get into a struggle of, you know, that was my intention behind kind of adding that mixed-use commercial, suggesting we add that mixed-use commercial to R two to allow some, you know, first-floor commercial uses for those kind of walk-in-shop style commercial uses, while hopefully with that definition, maintaining residential usage. But, you know, it's a struggle because I do understand a challenge there is that then, of course, you're introducing that use into other R two neighborhoods, which might not fit as well as, you know, the north part of Carlisle. But I would certainly struggle with NC one being suggested along Carlisle because, again, there are a lot of commercial uses within NC one, including, you know, drinking places, eating places, really commercial uses. So, yeah, I don't, I don't really know what the solution is.
Well, if you don't mind, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no, that was the end, I just don't know.
I mean, we do have this document that I'd asked you, John, if you wouldn't mind finding in Sue Ciprilli's email, that does provide an alternative that no one has maybe considered yet, and I just want to see if anybody read that and sees that as an alternative. NC four, which is a solution that is being proposed by residents that may Which is a solution that is being proposed by residents, uh, that maybe hits at what Nick is saying, maybe not. But if you pulled that up, I don't know if you have easy access to it.
No, my computer's decided to crash, actually, right now.
But everyone on their computers, maybe, or maybe we'll wait and see?
I have it.
Do you have any reactions to that, Nick, as a solution to what you're saying?
Personally, I think it's great. Um, I don't know if I agree with every single one, but the idea, I mean, I was, I'm in favor of potentially, if we have an area of town that we don't think fits any of the current zones, my personal preference would be that we create a zone that fits it, rather than just being like, oh, well, I guess it doesn't fit either of these zones, or trying to shoehorn uses, like, I think, and I was guilty of doing that into R two, you know, without then understanding that we need to be okay with those uses in R two everywhere, that there's R two, so I personally am certainly not opposed to a, an NC four. I don't know that staff in the council was particularly thrilled by that, but I guess that can be their decision. So, I, I wouldn't, I would not be opposed at all. But.
Anyone else want to react to these drawings? This is the document called NC four, Proposed Map Change, Planning Commission three seventeen. And it has a couple of maps, yeah, that's it. But the first one, I think, is where it should start, the first page.
I mean, I would go even simpler, I would just copy R two, as it's defined now, into NC four, and then add those couple of commercial uses we were considering for Carlyle Street.
Say that one more time, please.
Like, we would just take what R two is now, on the usage chart, we kind of copy that, but then just add those couple of commercial uses, you know, that, I think it was the general uses, with, like, the storefront uses, into, into R two. So, we'd be able to kind of have our cake and eat it too, we'd add a couple of commercial uses to R two, without adding, to, to that section of Carlyle, without adding commercial uses everywhere within R two, you know?
Oh, I see, so, but you're still saying to rename this, NC four, but it'd be R two plus.
I appreciate the work you did here, Sue, I don't know if I agree with all of those things, so I think for me, it would start, we'd start at R two, which is, as defined right now, very limited commercially. And then we would add a couple,
I see.
You know, commercial uses, as we discussed in previous meetings, like, kind of general commercial, which is, those more, more of those storefronts, walk-in, business kind of things.
All right, well, then there's a starting place, one mission, commission member, uh, is using that as a starting place, any reaction to Nick's thoughts?
I'm inclined to keep it more residential. You know, I appreciate everybody's work and comments, but parking along that stretch is also an issue with having more commercial, um, the increased traffic. I, I think that we need to protect the residential character, rather than introduce more commercial uses, and, and to create a special district just for that.
Thank you, thanks Jenny.
Why me?
I just feel like we're kind of like, two-two for potentially wanting to see some increasing commercial uses, and then not wanting to see some increased commercial uses. Charles and I, I think, differ on how it might be accomplished, but.
Sarah, Marty?
Uh, I'll, I'll defer to our planning director on this one, I don't feel very strongly one way or another.
Okay, and the planning director wants to say what?
Well, we've, we've, um, we've provided you with R two or NC one now. NC one, as opposed to making a new district, NC one is consistent with the corridor approach, that's been, that seems to have naturally evolved out of this process. A new NC four, or even, yeah, like, an R three, some kind of more intensive residential may be a solution, but it will be very limited, I mean, we're talking about a block. So, the other concern at last month's meeting was from Gettysburg College, specifically for their structures along Carlyle, to be able to have higher intensity commercial uses as, by right. If you want to, I guess, meet them, more in the middle of the NC one would provide them with greater flexibility. The R two would limit them to their current status as being a, um, college property, so they, they, they can pretty much use it however they see fit, as they are an institution of higher learning. But in the event that they were to ever sell those properties, then there would be a potential for a non-conforming use situation that would potentially be problematic for, especially the larger structures.
Thank you, and, and so, the college who was here at that meeting left, I think, thinking that we were not going to support them in this, but it sounds like you, you have made these changes in a way that responds to some of their concerns.
Well, yeah, I mean, we, when staff made the request to the consultant, I, I mean, like I said, we, we were on the impression that this was the one the planning commission had wanted. If it's incorrect, which it, by all means, it appears it is incorrect, the NC one is a, is a potential solution. Alternatively, we've, the steering committee recommended R two under the basis of increased housing opportunities. There is a history of, um, I guess, with, with the Pizza House, there was a, a very unique history of reuse of some of those structures into commercial opportunities. And then the surrounding neighborhoods have been very vocal about wanting to maintain residential land uses, especially as they relate to the R one district, and the, um, potential for any type of non-single-family detached residential land use within those zones.
And can you, I apologize, ask you to do this again, can you just show us again what you did make, the change?
Yeah, so it's the
How you did make the change?
Yeah, the properties that are, whoops, how about I try to pull this up, the properties that we had previously, um, where is there, okay? Previously been there zoned RO in the current zoning map. So these would be the ones that would be affect, most likely affected, if you're contemplating maintaining the existing mixed-use status for those properties along Carlyle that already have that benefit, with the exception of Paxton Hall, which has, was requested to be R two.
So show, show us where, uh, RO is now.
It, it is, it's these parcels, these are all RO.
Oh, I guess I'm mixing my colors up, thanks.
Um, here, I'll pull up the existing map. Where's my map? So, in the current map, it's more of this gold, brown color. The difference, uh, the primary difference is associated with maintaining parcel boundaries. This one, it's cut off in the existing map. What's going on with this? I mean, it's, it's something where it would be beneficial to maintain throughout the entire parcel, one single zoning classification. Other than that, I believe this parcel also features a, a mixed zone going on, or two, two zoning districts, as opposed to just having one for the entire parcel.
When you suggested this to the consultant, and then they made the change, and you brought it to us, is this with staff recommendation?
We, I would say that it's, it's one of the changes that's be, that we thought was requested by Planning Commission. The steering committee wanted this to be R two. The, the concerted, like, the changes that would go on with these properties, they're all, these are very unique properties, let's just point that out first off. They're much larger than all the surrounding parcels that are residential in nature, so there is something unique about them, that's, I would say that, from a staff planning perspective, it would make sense to either have a mixed-use or that R two. Really can't provide you with a distinction between the, the two. If it makes, if you want to see increased commercial opportunities, the NC one seems to be the best route. If you want to maintain the residential character, the R two would be the preferred route.
But what about RO?
Well, they're, so the
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Well, which, which one is more similar to RO, is, would it be NC one?
Yeah, I don't know that I agree with that. I mean, NC one allows for so much bedding use, brew pub, childcare center, community service, drinking place, eating place, event venue, funeral home, all general commercial uses, group childcare, massage establishment, medical clinic, methadone treatment facility, microbrewery, office uses, sure, pawn shop, private club, tattoo parlor, I mean, there's so much allowed in NC one. It's, it's basically, if you compare NC one in Old Town or general commercial, they're pretty similar. There's like farmer's market and grocery store and stuff that's not in NC one, but NC one is just so permissive to commercial uses. That's, and again, that's my struggle, it should, if we do NC one here, it's just opening a door to a lot of commercial uses.
Okay. Yes.
The reason I came up with the comments that I did for this term was because partly Nick was concerned, at one time, about having Paxton Hall be able to be a motel, and in order to do that, it seems like they put motel into R two. Which would happen all over town. So, that was my reason for extending what is the RO zone currently. And you have to remember, right now, the uses that the college was talking about last time are in the existing RO district, they are talking about event venues and possibly museum. That's in the RO. So I said, why don't we just try to construct a zone that has some amount of opportunities for uses, but not all the retail and, like, vape stores and that, it's not that kind of a situation. And it was referred to in the comprehensive plan as kind of a unique situation. So, can we leave it the way it is, add in whatever appropriate use? I wanted to make sure you had group homes, 'cause some of those buildings, and even the, um, currently the motels, could be used for group home use. And they're, you know, probably more appropriate there than in the smaller lots in R two. So it's kind of a unique thing, and that was recognized in 2019 in the comp plan. So, the extended thing that I did, that was sort of to accommodate Nick's concern about the motel, being able to be a motel if the college wanted to sell it. So, that's up to you guys, but I, I don't think motel is an appropriate use in an R two zone. So, that's, part of my thinking was, took a look at the 2008 map, there were some things wrong with the R one zoning there on Carlyle. And just kind of make it its own thing, and call it whatever you want, but it's not R one. And it's really not the R two, it's, it's really more of a neighborhood, college-oriented thing, and there's one building there that was vacant for over twenty years, that I've been there and was recently rehabbed. And it's got student rentals on the top floors, and it's vacant on the first floor right now, it could be something like a cafe or something that would benefit the neighborhood. That's the kind of uses, without going totally commercial.
Thank you, thanks for that clarification of the document you sent us, and something that you've brought to our attention for several meetings now. Let's revisit, then, any reactions to this discussion to move it forward. Sarah, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, I, I, um, I'm not in favor of, um, changing it to NC one, I do think that has too many commercial possibilities, but R two is too restrictive with commercial uses, so I think at this point I am in favor of a, a special new district. But I, as far as the uses that Sue listed in her proposal, I think even that might have too many possibilities, I would be in favor of taking out some of those, but I, I think we have all this, based on what, based on what she has described, I think we all have in mind what kind of commercial entities would be attractive there and beneficial to residential uses. So it's just a matter of deciding what commercial activities would be permitted.
So it sounds like you and Nick are sharing some common thoughts on this.
Can I just, I, I want to correct myself here, it doesn't change how I feel, but I will, I just feel compelled to say I did look up residential office district, and it does allow more uses than I originally thought. Like, emergency services, funeral homes, financial institutions with drive-throughs, museum, um, restaurants, hotels, gift shops, and, so, I just want to point that out, because I think I did say that RO was more restrictive than it is, so I apologize for that. But I still do agree with what Sarah suggested.
And I guess I would say, I've been seeing West Middle and Carlyle, at least these blocks, in a similar way. So I thought they belong in similar zones, although now I'm getting more nervous about uses in the zone we just approved. But, is it possible, John, to consider, and had the consultant ever considered, or the group ever considered, like, this as being a unique neighborhood because of its proximity to the college, that some of those properties are owned by the college, or are serving college students? And that that is an unusual situation for R two, that might suggest that it belong in a different district?
Yeah, I don't feel confident speaking for the steering committee on that specific topic. It does, I, I think it goes back to just the understanding that the basis is more residential, the structure could be converted into apartments. It's just that basis in the determination was the guiding principle for their deliberation, so I think it goes back to, when looking at this area, the, the want was more residential opportunities.
Okay, so Marty said he's taking the direction of the planning director.
Right, and I believe a representative from the college wanted to chime in there.
Sorry. Yes, please.
Can I speak?
Yes. Uh, no, would you mind speaking over there? And if you could introduce yourself. Again, uh, we, we try to stick to public comment and not interrupt that precious part of the meeting, but this is important enough that I think feedback on the very topic we're after has also been one of our norms, so this is why we're inviting you.
I'm just confused that the prohibition about using them as motels, because they were motels, right?
Yeah, I think that, for me personally, that was our rationale for including motel as a use in the neighborhoods that we saw the existing motels in would be, you know, those are very unique structures, and to make them something else would be challenging, even, you know, this idea, obviously, of very pro-residential, those would take a lot of work to turn into, I mean, you'd probably have to demolish the buildings, I mean, those don't have kitchens, things like that, so that was our rationale for including, um, motel in R two, with, Sue, I understand what you're saying, but with the understanding that by definition of motel use in the ordinance, there's really no other parcels that fit the minimum lot size requirement for a motel, so, from, I think, uh, you know, other, other folks jump in, but we were, we were kind of including motel as a use to allow for those specific parcels, with the understanding that the definition of the ordinance would not really allow other motels to be suddenly constructed within R two, and so, Mr. Coyn, to your point, even with all this conversation around Carlyle Street, at least personally, I wouldn't want to exclude motel uses where those motel buildings are.
And to be clear, we have no plans to do that, but we just want to preserve flexibility, as any property owner would. Thank you.
So currently motel is by special exception in R2 and it's not included in NC1. And that seems strange to me. Wouldn't it be better to include it in NC1 and take it out of R2 and then bring the hotel into the NC? What, maybe four, four, I'm sorry. It's not in NC1 or NC2, it's in NC3. And I guess we could make it a use in NC4 and then that would allow us to eliminate it from, from R2 if we include the Paxton Hall in, in NC4.
Yeah, I mean, it definitely is odd. I think, you know, this is, when we suggested that, I don't think there was a conversation around changing Carlisle Street from R2. So I think the reason that we added it to R2 was just this understanding that there was at least two, maybe three, and I think just, no, three motels within this stretch. Cause there's the corner that's yellow R2 right now, that's Paxton. Across the street is Smizer, which is also a motel. And then I believe-
Colonial.
Colonial and Lom. So it's actually probably all, no, I think just Lom. I think Colonial is in red right now, I would argue, because it's past Water Street, right? So, but three motels are existing on that stretch.
And is this the only R2 section where there's a hotel concern? Were you responding to it just for this? Or would the, if we took it out of R2, would that affect other R2? Do you know, John?
By taking it out of R2, uh, it would most likely not affect any other property as, as intended.
All right, I don't want to be too knee jerk on this, but then it sounds to me that eliminating it from R2 and including an NC4 district that, that captures all of that might solve a lot of these problems. But I also don't want to invite other problems because we've done that now a couple of times in this process without realizing it. Sarah, would you be okay with that? And Nick?
Yeah, I mean, that's, I think that's what I would prefer, but again, I don't, I mean, given the alternative between deciding between R2 and NC1, I would certainly lean in favor of leaving it as R2 and just unfortunately not allowing commercial uses. But if there's an opportunity to create a new NC4 that fits all of this, I would certainly be in favor.
Mr. Chair, if I may-
Please.
What staff is gained from this is that looking at this area, an NC4 district should be considered, making it such that it would be R2 higher density focus, but also very low impact neighborhood, commercial type of uses centered around the general commercial that use as opposed to the other heavier, retail heavier, commercial business or auto dependent business. If that's something that the planning commission is amenable to, we can present that as early as next month.
That seemed to perfectly represent what I think I'm thinking.
Yeah, and motels.
But I, I know we have, Jenny, would you continue your objection?
I do. I feel strongly that this should still be R2, but I understand that I'm one voting member.
Well, I think Marty too. I don't know, where are you now?
I mean, if I were an owner of one of those lots, I, I think, you know, you'd want your own zone. But, uh, I, yeah, I don't feel really strongly about it being, uh, one way or the other, mainly, you know, for John's sake, I think, I, I trust his instincts on this and.
Well, that seems like we have a three, one and one.
If, if everyone's agreeable to it, we can at least present the option next month. And it sounds like there's, staff can move forward unless someone has a direct problem with that.
Please move forward, I think, both on West Middle and Carlisle as we have deliberated. And thank you all. Okay. Back to you, John.
Okay, um. So in terms of changes from the steering committee draft to the current draft, the most significant one is the, of course, the height related to the extended building height provisions will now include, I guess, the addition of an NC4 district. And then individual parcel changes that have occurred. The, um, overall, the, trying to think of anything else. With that specific point, I don't have anything coming. With regards to recommendation for Borough Council occurring on April 21st, 2025, if the planning commission is acceptable, we can put it on the agenda. We'll, it'll most likely be quite a few options for you to pick from with regards to that approval. Otherwise, we can punt for another month, have a, another round of deliberation on a newer draft, including the NC4 changes and other changes discussed tonight and go from there.
So let's just be clear, there were no other things you wanted to highlight related to proposed reversions to prior draft materials or changes from the steering committee to current draft other than what you just said, everything you believe has been captured?
Well, we, we provided, um, in the staff packet-
Yeah, I see that.
The, um, I'll pull that up.
Wish there were like tabs or something. Mine keeps going real slow. I can't like scroll through. All those big pages with the Strabon stuff. Where was that? I think just the idea that it's in a few of these pawn shop and check cashing.
I'll pull it up another way. Okay, so zoning map changes.
What page is this?
Well, I just pulled it up separately. Having difficulty with the actual PDF.
Sarah, do you know what page that is?
Oh, the packet, the recommendations, sixty, uh, sixty-three.
Okay.
Or sixty-two, yeah.
So yeah, with the rezoning staff report, we've had the changes to community development objectives as discussed last month. That would be to create, uh, to include three specific bullet points. K would be to create opportunities for centrally located activity centers that would be available to both visitors and residents and potentially encourage interaction. L to provide for meaningful and well-paying employment opportunities within the borough by including adequate land area districts and uses within those districts. And M to protect and maintain resources and amenities that benefit the residents and visitors to their historic town. And these are in the statement of community development objectives within the very beginning of the ordinance. The revitalization district, figure 212B that has been updated. It's still referenced, uh, an increased building height. The purpose statement for R2, that was edited. It currently, well, the, the changes would alleviate the issue with specific types of residential housing. There was discussion yet last month about two-family duplex, how, how that relates. Staff's recommended change would be the purposes of the R2 district is to provide for the development of certain areas of the borough into residential neighborhoods that contain a mix of residential dwellings and create walkable access to goods and services in the downtown and other destination areas within the borough. Funeral homes has been removed from the R2 district. General commercial mixed-use building has been removed as well. And then that's, that, that was the updates from the February ordinance draft. Other than that, the, this items discussed tonight, we'll, we'll include those. We'll make a revised staff report as well, providing you with guidance on either a method to vote in the affirmative of a draft at next month's meeting or at least provide justification for additional review.
Nick was, uh, sharing with me some other comments that we had received that maybe you want to add now to the discussion, at least for consideration.
Sure, I mean, uh, we were, we received public comment surrounding some specific use. Uh, let me just pull up to get the exact name right. Pawn, pawn shops is the, like, what I would call it, but what does the borough call it? Pawn shop slash check cashing establishment, which I believe is currently, I want to make sure I have the right usage chart. I think I might've lost it. I believe it's currently special exception in NC1 by Wright and NC2, special exception in NC3. And by Wright in C1 in Old Town? What is C1?
That would be general commercial.
General commercial, okay. I must just be reading incorrectly. I personally, I mean, I don't have a strong opinion on this. I just felt like we should potentially respond. But I'm, yeah, I don't know.
John, do you want to have a reaction to that?
Let me see. So establishment is primarily engaged in the business of lending money, uh, security, pledged goods left in pawn. It's a pawn shop. I mean, it's generally going to be a store where your primary goods are going to be the sale of guns, har, heavier wares, um, television, jewelry. It is, then becomes a lending institution in the way it engages in practice. It's not an unusual use for mixed-use locations. It's, it provides those businesses, those commercial business oper, those commercial business spaces that may not have adequate ventilation or smaller size to be able to operate. And it's something especially within the borough, we have quite a few unique, I would say more novelty or tourist-related pawn shops catering to, uh, antiques and things like, things related to the Civil War. So if it's, it has a special exception in the NC1 and NC3 zones, it's going to have that higher standard of review, but placing it in the NC2, I mean, that, it gets to that, um, yeah, that more unique, uh, type of storefrontage that may be occurring in those smaller spaces.
Do you know why, why would pawn shop be considered the same kind of thing as a check cashing establishment? I do, I mean, based on, like you said, Gettysburg has a different kind of market for pawn shop wares potentially with the Civil War stuff. So why would, I mean, I would see a check cashing as a very different kind of storefront with-
It's a lending institution. It's just a, not, it's not regulated to nearly the same extent as a bank or credit union. I mean, check cashing in particular, I'm not quite sure why that, that one is in this use. It is, generally that's going to be an activity associated with the lending institution as opposed to a standalone.
Because in appearance, I would see, I mean, a pawn shop can look like a retail store or an antique, one of the antique stores we have. I mean, they might actually more operate kind of like a pawn shop as far as I know. So it just seems interesting to me that they're linked together as if they're the same or similar entities. That's just crazy.
Yeah, I would have to, I, I can check with Troy on that specific instance, but I, I imagine that when, when establishing the land use table, it was something that they've used, that they, being Michael Baker International, has used in other zoning ordinances of the state.
So remind me, Nick, what was the request that you were, that was made to you?
I, well, Sue, I think you had put this in your comments or am I misremembering about pawn?
I wondered what you needed that use in four different zones. And to me, the check cashing thing was more, could be along the lines of these predatory lending institutions which take advantage of people who don't know any better.
Yeah, and my personal perspective as a planning commission member, I just felt we should, it was brought up as a concern. We should discuss it. I don't personally, I'm, I'm not moving to do anything, if that makes sense. But I'm not opposed if other people feel strongly.
Could you just scroll up one more time just from, because you have the page open. What zones are those again?
So a special exception in the NC1. NC2 permitted by Wright, NC3 special exception, uh, prevented by Wright and general commercial and Old Town.
And what would we do in NC4?
With that, we probably wouldn't include it. As it even, I mean, it, it really, it really doesn't seem like necessarily a general commercial basis land use as you've directed me to, um, review. As it is, I mean, pawn shops are generally federal, they're firearms dealers as opposed to like general commercial goods. Their, 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 the lending arm of the, of the user is, I mean, they're bringing in an item to hold in storage as a form of charity on a loan. So it's, it's not exactly, um, it's not exactly a more residentially focused land use. Now, yes, I've, in my practice, I've seen them in residential areas. Usually the interplay is not good. There's research indicating that especially low-income areas, that they can be detrimental to security. While positive, uh, security benefits occur in higher income areas. So it's one of those things where it is a, a unique one. But overall, um, yeah, we would not, we would not put it in the NC4 by default.
Now, would you be able to, I, I don't believe it exists currently in our zoning. Am I correct?
What now?
Like pawn, like current zoning uses right now. And I'm just, to be completely honest, I just went to the, the Ecode website and just put pawn in the search bar. So that is not an extensive search by any means, but I, it's not coming up for anything. So I just don't know that it already exists.
Well, it, it definitely is in practice. Let's, I'm just pulling up the use table now from the current ordinance. We can do some, yeah, pawn doesn't come up, but, uh, financial.
You know, like check cashing?
Yeah, I mean, there's, we have, we don't, I don't even think we have check cashing. So, yeah, one of those things where we're trying to get more uses put into the ordinance to better reflect what's going on. Most likely they're operating, I think we have one for retail sales.
So, so can we first say that we have consensus without objection that NC4 does not include this use?
Yes.
Okay. And then I'd like to revisit NC1. And I know it's special exception, which is a protection, but given how I'm understanding NC1, I'd like to eliminate it altogether from NC1.
That's fine.
Are there any objections to that? Eliminating it from NC1? All right, John, would you be able to do that? Okay, thank you for letting that be heard. Any other changes to that use in other districts? Okay. So we've reviewed items that we've received. I am certain that there are probably some comments that we have not reviewed or haven't reviewed to the satisfaction of residents, but we have done our best and that we are playing a role here, but we aren't the final decision maker. Do any council members want to add anything else to this discussion before we turn it to John to say any final comments and tell us what he's going to bring to us just one last time at our April meeting? Does anyone else want to add anything on the rezoning discussion?
I want to ask something. In our last, and I was reading and I'm like, of course, I can't remember what page it is now, but your recommendations, I just told.
Sixty-two?
Thank you, yes. And I, you know, I think on our last meeting, and it may have been an offhanded comment, but I did, in our, I guess your recommendation that you're presenting to us is that we reconsider the revitalization zone?
So, um, let's see. So the recommendation from the, this was the presented on February with the addition, so yeah, they, um, February 18th request, uh, recommendation did have, preferably the planning commission would reexamine building height provisions as they relate to parcels owned revitalization districts, which have been provided a vested right to increased building heights. If the planning commission cannot provide a recommendation for the increased building height, staff recommends that the planning commission provide a favorable recommendation of the February 14th draft, which is since no, no longer in play as it was not considered at the February meeting. So as, as I've said a few times in this process, the parcels that were previously identified for increased building height, the four parcels specifically. for increased building height, the four parcels specifically, there is something that has already been decided by the zoning hearing board that from staff's perspective and in, in speaking with the borough solicitor, were confident that those properties have a vested right to have an increased building height. By not codifying it, that does present potential challenge to the ordinance. Now, what does that exactly mean? It, it, it provides leeway for a potential ju- judgment against the borough. It's something that, uh, from my professional standpoint, um, I would not recommend the planning commission make that recommendation. But I also live on earth. I understand that you all have your own ones and, and going through this process. Just want to make sure that I've provided you with that information and say you're able to make a determination with all the facts.
Thanks for that. I guess another question I had was, and I can't remem- I thought it was the last meeting that maybe you made some comment about, or someone maybe questioned. The fact that we took out the height from the revitalization district sort of makes it not have any purpose. So now that we're adding an NC four and the fact that the, there's sort of a, um, sawtooth appearance of the revitalization zone, I wondered if there was any reason that we would just try to eliminate, I mean, I've, I have no belief that this will change the Gettysburg station site or desire that it would do that. But just as far as our initial thoughts about expanding the district and now it's, there seems to be maybe not be a purpose to do so. Would it make more sense to wrap those parcels back into and exist to another district?
So I, I, I believe at last month's meeting, I, I did express that, uh, staff was under the impression that the planning commission was interested in removing the revitalization district. In particular, the revitalization district allows for a different building form than what's currently permitted in the Old Town district. Additionally, the land uses are geared more towards higher intensity land uses as opposed to a full broad spectrum of commercial. So instead of having a vacation rental, we want to have, we want to see hotels built there. As opposed to having like a cafe, some kind of a larger restaurant, something that would enable those parcels to be better, better used and allowed for best optimization of the land that's directly abutting the downtown. If the planning commission, it doesn't feel that that's necessary anymore. By all means, we can revert those back to the OT designation. The physical cha- like i- in terms of any physical change to the, the land, I mean, it's, it's not necessarily going to be any different. The, the issue that we would most likely see is that revitalization wouldn't occur in those areas because they're currently zoned Old Town and we're seeing suboptimal land use occur.
So I guess, well, what was it about that? I thought we, at the last meeting asked what, you know, by identifying it as revitalization, what does that do to actually motivate change?
It's, so we, we had like a carrot and stick approach. The carrot, the building, the incentive was the extended building height. That's something that developers have been consistent. They need to have larger buildings to be able to make the numbers work. Uh, specifically the Gettysburg station project in particular, the developer has been very outspoken on the need to recoup land development costs and what that would physically require for the development of that site. In this case, in a building height that I believe is, um, I think last talk was sixty-eight feet or something to that extent. By, by main, by maintaining the current, I guess, by, by, by having that carrot, you're able to potentially incentivize that development. The stick would be, was that you're not allowed to do those lower intensity uses. You have a non-conforming situation. Eventually, time will make those uses either revert to something that's permitted or redevelopment occur for the structure.
Um, and so, I mean, it seems to me that the, the expansion of the district, my perception of that area, like south of Coon Alley, the Lap Avenue is that they already, they're already underused, like they're, the owners of those properties could convert them from storage units to something that I would think would be higher intensity and more revenue creating with the current zoning. But they're not doing that. So why would they do that if?
No, I get it. Yeah, I get it.
I'm not sure how we.
Yeah, no, I'm just wondering if we can take these one at a time and first address the building height and reconsider the recommendation of both the solicitor and the, the planning commissioner about the potential. And then I think that might help make the case for the revitalization district being its own district, if it does have that height. And so I think we're kind of changing the order by talking about two things at once without deciding them sequentially.
Thank you, Jenny. I heard though, correct me, John, that you were suggesting that this recommendation was now moot.
Well, yes, I mean, that was, we, we provided you with that information. It was just included in the recommendation for the, um, resolution by the planning commission to provide a positive recommendation of the zoning ordinance draft. The, I mean, we, I'll, if we have another, uh, when we have another staff report, it'll, it'll be reiterated again. It's just one of those things.
So let's.
You don't have to vote on.
Yeah, well, now let's start with Jenny's suggestion here though, because your comment made me a little nervous. Um, and the paper is sitting right here and the thing is being recorded. And I certainly don't think this commission would like to have a negative ruling in a court on the borough. So I think we need to make this very straightforward, given what John just said and Jenny you recommending is to discuss it. I need it to be explained and maybe Adam Boyer is the person who needs to explain it. He has another commitment tonight. The zoning hearing board, please correct me, anyone, ruled on an existing ordinance, the ordinance that we still have. And they ruled that the applicant had met the standard by that ordinance at that time. We have been tasked with a revise, a, a rewrite of the ordinance. And I am sure that there are other zoning hearing board decisions that have been made about the existing ordinance that we're not being reminded of right now, but we are being reminded of this. And it's even so much that we're being reminded in a recommendation in your report. So I do feel nervous about that because it suggests that the planning commission is not heeding a recommendation that might land the community in a negative, uh, ruling. Why is it that this is the recommendation that's coming to our attention, but I'm certain that there are other zoning hearing board rulings that are not? In a rewrite, I thought that we re- we rewrite.
So when looking at development within the borough, the parcels identified as the Gettysburg station site have been in a state of, I would say, a gray field, gravel lot for a number of years now. The, the recommendation from staff rea- was reiterating that, that portion of the ordinance change that has happened since the steering committee. It was a very, I guess, uh, what this, a very intense deliberation regarding the revitalization district. Um, it's something that staff is concerned that it is not, is not being addressed with this ordinance. Because as, as I mentioned, there's, we're, we're getting notification from our attorneys that it is, it is challenging to have an ordinance rewrite that doesn't necessarily reflect the, I guess, recent rulings that have occurred with this issue. This issue in particular, because this is really the only development that's happening in the borough of Gettysburg to this scale of redevelopment that we would like to see in these, for these areas that are suboptimal. So in, in what I say, we, um, looking at the borough properties that have, there's one story structures near downtown, areas where you can have increased building height, areas where you have increased development, uh, City Mark. New, there are numerous examples in this area. With the direction that I've received, that's why we're providing you with that recommendation. It's also, I wouldn't say that you have to follow the recommendation to change anything that you're doing. But we have to be cognizant of the fact that the ordinance will then be reviewed by borough council. And as such, I mean, as a board of their creation, we want to make sure that we're providing them with information that's beneficial for the review as well.
I'll say one last thing, ask you one more question. I totally get the recommendation related to the reason behind revitalization and this incentive that was considered and has been in operation about revitalization. I totally get why you would make that recommendation. I just don't still get how this part of the plan is any different from any other part of the plan that we have freely been able to, uh, adapt to what we believe is best in the borough for planning. Let me say, I'm trying to make this more clear. Maybe others who are thinking of what I'm saying, like, this has been identified as something that lawyers have been consulted on. And I don't know if that means someone beyond Adam Boyer. I don't recall Adam Boyer at our meeting saying that this was some sort of red flag. Because just like every other part of the map, we have been in the business of, oh, repeal and replace. And so that's what we've been doing. And I guess I don't, I'm a historian, not a lawyer. So maybe that's why I can't figure this out. But I don't understand the legal, um, aspect that you've been intro- that you've introduced so well. Maybe we should.
W- w- if, if desired, um, I can get some further clarification from the borough solicitor regarding any, any, the potential changes, not potentially, I can get, I can, I can receive comment from the borough solicitor on this item.
That would be helpful for me personally, but I would like now to turn to others. Jenny, maybe you could start.
Right. My understanding was that we, it's in the interest of the borough to codify what was granted to the developers of the Gettysburg station. And put that in this zoning effort because then we won't have a conflict. If we remove that building height, I think we then have a conflict. John, does that?
That's a good way of putting it, yes.
I mean, I'm with Charles. I think generally during this entire process, our understanding was that what people are allowed to do now, what's been approved now is okay in perpetuity. And we have not thought about, in fact, we've gone against existing uses in a lot of places. I mean, when you're thinking about increasing housing, you look at some uses that are not housing and you say, well, we want this to be housing in the future. So we're creating non-conforming uses and that has not come up anywhere else. And I also would mention that we're not the deciding body on this document. I think I'm comfortable with our recommendation being potentially out of compliance with how the borough feels about this. But I would argue that it's the council's ultimate responsibility to pass a document that they are comfortable with, that the borough is comfortable with. And so personally, I, I don't see any need, and I'm also not a lawyer, so bad night for Adam Boyer not to be here, I guess. But, you know, I think if there is such a concern, I would assume that the borough council would address it before they pass the final ordinance. And so I, I don't know how much we need to do, kind of reconsider something that, and I don't even honestly feel strongly about the height either way. But we've, we've been sitting on this at forty-eight feet for months now and I'm okay with continuing it that way.
Marty or Sarah?
Uh, I don't want to get sued, so whatever the lawyers say, um, that's who I'd put my trust in.
If I may, Mr. Chair, the staff report is just a recommendation from your, from staff.
Okay.
Not, it, we provided you a method to approve the ordinance without the extended building height. We just wanted to make sure that.
Okay, yeah.
We're noting that there could be a potential problem in the future that, so setting up a, um, scenario where it's reviewed by council would be in our benefit in such that it, it provides them the justification that, okay, well, they looked into this, they provide findings.
That's great.
So if there is a change, if there is no change, at least it was reviewed.
Yeah.
And I guess what, what I partly wonder is with the revitalization district, if in fact, making some uses non-conforming is a way to then motivate their change, to say that. So in that regard, I guess that's why I partly, you know, just looking at it now, I realized, well, I've even looked at where self-storage is permitted. And it's only by right in the industrial zone, which makes sense to me, but we still are, still are allowing it by special exception in the revitalization district. And I, you know, I think when we included those parcels in that zone, we thought we would want those to convert. Because in my opinion, it's not a great use of space to have self-storage so close to downtown. So I guess what I, you know, as an alternative, would like to suggest that we remove self-storage facilities from revitalization even as special exception.
Okay, let's, can you hold for that one second? Like, um, say one thing related to what Jenny said. My understanding of the word codified is what is in the document currently. It is codified in the document. The height, in the existing ordinance, it's there. It's what was used by the zoning hearing board in ruling on a applicant that submitted their proposal a year ago or whenever it was. But we have been in the business of revise and rewrite. And so our, again, I'm speaking not as a lawyer, but as a member of this body. I always assumed that we were not given a document and said, you can revise and rewrite, but just not this section. Um, that doesn't seem what this process would be. But I think your suggestion of having Adam or whomever attorneys are being involved somewhere along the process. I believe the county is going to also look at this after it's been proposed. So it'll go through several reviews. Whoever writes the resolution will also be preparing it in such a way to clear any compliance issues about legality.
And I, I would just reiterate, it's, it was included as a method for caution.
Okay.
I, I think potentially it might not be the borough that gets sued. It would be the developer who gets sued. That would be my, that's maybe the easier person to sue.
If I could speak to that, I don't want to, I'm not an attorney, but generally, um, they're going to sue all, as many parties as they can.
All right. All right. We've used the word sue probably one too many times for the planning commission to really. So I, I, unless there's an objection, um, and please, if there is, share it. Uh, we are not going to revisit this topic of height at the moment, but this recommendation is going to stay on this document through till the.
It's got, actually, I'll, I'll be changing it with the new staff report. We'll put that into the document, probably in a different location other than recommendation, given the concern I've heard tonight. As it is just, it's just a staff recommendation. Your determination does not have to play any part in that document. It's just that we provide that for general guidance.
And I think that's very useful when the council receives this, to be able to sense what this deliberation was and that we took it seriously. Do you have any, I, I think you probably still object to this, but.
I do. And, and my recollection from when we talked last summer too, was that we, we talked about it and then there were some coun- there were some planning commission members absent and we kind of tabled it because of that. But I felt that was also, you know, done in a way to get favor for certain votes in a way. So I think the, the whole process has been less than ideal is the word I would use.
Okay. Thank you, Jenny, for that perspective.
Ultimately, council decides, right? So.
And I think one of the reasons I made the comment about, well, if we have to revisit, one of these things we just revisited earlier in the meeting was that none of our votes are ever binding until we make this recommendation next month or the month after. Is that correct, John?
Yes.
So, um, that would be my impression of the way we've tried to continue conversation until it's over. Now, to Sarah's point. Now, to Sarah's point, but please register that we have one planning commission member who would heed your recommendation now. To Sarah's point, do you want to say it again so we can see if we want to change that use?
I'm recommending that we remove storage facilities as a special exception right in the revitalization district.
Would anyone join Sarah in that?
I agree.
All second.
Okay. So, and I support it, too. So it looks like five to remove that. Okay, so I think, did you want to return to what else you were saying before we went back?
I don't know.
Sure. Okay. All right. And, you know, an ongoing question about revitalization will be some, I'm sure revitalization will be picked up by the council. Certain. Then let me go back. I, John, I really appreciate this document you put together, the rezoning staff report. I do wonder, I'm sure this is going to be reformulated because the top of it is the stuff from the last meeting, and you'll integrate that. And I noticed there was one section that didn't seem to be, it's building height and design standards on page 63 of this document. It's sort of like a hanging heading without anything underneath it, but maybe that's just a misplaced heading. Will there be more language under that? Or?
You passed it.
Oh.
It's right under, if you look at the bolded lot design standards, yeah, keep going down. Right there. And then at the bottom of that section, right there.
Oh, yeah, building height and design standards. We can, yeah, this will be, this will be expanded.
Okay. And this is the document that we've been asking, John, to compile, and I, and you've been updating this, and this will be really important for council, I think. All right, then, any other comments related to rezoning at the moment from the planning commission? Then my understanding, John, is that we've deliberated in such a way that you have two sets of things to return to us with options. I do think we all owe you so much. 10 meetings is a lot of meetings. I checked last time they did this, I think they had 12, so we're under that. But you've had to respond several times to evolving thinking on this, and you've always done it so carefully and patiently, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do Chad or John want to say anything else on rezoning before we go to your zoning report? I mean, your, your planning report.
Staff has nothing further to add with regards to the rezoning discussion.
Okay. Then let's go to the item C, which is the annual report from 2024.
This is the most exciting thing tonight. Planning Commission overall, it's, this is just a review of the applications and summary for events that happened. One thing to look at, and we're going to be continuing to compile this information for post-COVID analysis. We're seeing some of our licenses and permits, they might not necessarily be associated with planning, but we are having some things pick up. Especially in looking at, for, for the planning aspect, it's the amusement licenses, and that's how we are interacting, where we allow for private events or public events operated by a third-party public-private partnership.
Way down there.
Those ones generally are, we're seeing an increase. In terms of our building permit numbers, they were up, non-UCC permits were up. And then just with those, that general land use permit that's up, we're, we're running in the close to 300 range. This year, we are going, it was, it was really gangbusters last year, and then we've kind of hit a lull at this point. So we are seeing lower numbers right now. We are probably, the staff is not going to necessarily recommend increases for permits related to planning, so the land use permit or things like that. We have been engaged with the Adams County building officials. They do, they conduct our building code appeals, which is kind of in the wheelhouse of planning. They have upgraded their fees, I would say substantially, but they're actually in keeping in line with inflation. But their application fees for an appeal is up to $2,000 now. That is generally for borough activities. When we have, especially the vacation rentals, one of the things that most of our operators fail to understand is that you have to provide an actual accessible bedroom on the first floor, accessible changing or accessible bathroom facilities. And our structures were not designed for ADA, especially when it comes to our single-family dwellings. So those are most of the appeals that are happening from the borough. And generally, they're not won after they're filed. With regards to sign ordinance that was updated, we've begun the process of working with property owners, businesses specifically to modify any non-conforming signage. We have had some instances, especially as it relates to flags, getting those into compliance with the new regulations. We're further going to be looking this year into the sidewalk ordinance provisions. So there will be some additional refinement for furniture and other private items that are in the public right-of-way, ensuring that our sidewalks are navigable. This is going to be something that we're going to be exploring continually, especially as we get to a point where Baltimore Street is upgraded to a more pedestrian-friendly walking surface. And we'll be at a point then, hopefully later this year, where we're able to to provide a detailed guide to residents and business centers regarding expectations for the sidewalks. We, in terms of future goals, we are informing council of the want to update the subdivision and land development ordinance. Additionally, the historic design guidelines for the Historic Architecture Review Board are extremely out of date and would be beneficial to have those updated. Staff is looking into funding opportunities to do that. It is a little challenging for some of those change, for some of these, I guess, yeah, planning updates, planning processes, but it is something we're working towards. And then just, we just provide just general staff information and those individuals involved with the planning processes in 2024. The, of the, I guess, the subdivision and land development plans approved, Gettys Gulf is nearing completion. Spectra Coat, they're, I believe, still in the development phase. I'd have to actually reevaluate that one and get back to you. That entire block is most likely going to be reviewed, hopefully in the near future, with a subdivision and land development plan for a townhome development or some kind of residential development near the distillery part of that industrial zone. That concludes the annual report. If there's any additional information you would like to see provided with this report or in future years, please, by all means, send me an email. We can get you the data that we have available. And then staff, a related note, is aware of a housing development study that's being conducted by Bowen National Research. Once that's completed, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to get a copy of it to be able to provide to the planning commission as Bowen provides fantastic research, and it would be great benefit to actually see what our housing needs are from a quantitative perspective. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for our planning director?
That, that research would be tailored to Gettysburg or the Adams County area.
I have the impression that it's going to be the Cumberland, Gettysburg, Strabane area.
Thank you.
I just noticed one correction on the list of members of the planning commission, John Rice. His term also was extended to January 2029, like mine was. I don't know if you want to take us both to January 2025, because this actually came out before, or make our both of us 2029.
We can, we can update.
Whatever you do there. Yeah. I think that's great. Thank you. Okay. It takes a while for me to scroll up through this packet, so. Now, the announcements are that our next planning commission meeting is scheduled for Monday, April 21, 2025, at 7:00 PM. And now additional comments from planning commission members. Jenny?
I'm good.
Nick? Marty? Sarah? Me? Nothing from me. Public comment. Please also come over to the podium and state your name and residence.
My name's Bobby Chenault. I own property at 412 Carlisle Street and 535 Carlisle Street. I was here at the last meeting addressing the R1 family verbiage change and wasn't brought up tonight. Just want to get an update on that from, you know, council here on, will that be discussed at the next meeting? Will there be meeting minutes posted on that? Where's that?
We don't normally do back and forth, but this is a good just clarification point. I believe there's been no proposal to change the proposed language for that. We did take your comments at the last meeting, but this body has not decided to move on it. So that would come before the Borough Council when we make this proposal for you to bring it up to them.
Okay. I read the minutes, and I think there's a concern around students, but reading the family definition, I think the only caveat for students is that they maintain a residence outside of their family, their, you know, parents' household for a year. And so from my understanding of the way that the institution works, you know, that would exclude first years from potentially living outside because they hadn't established that kind of year-long, you know, separation from their parents' dwelling. But I think sophomores and up, and there's, obviously, there's what the college allows, but I'm just speaking specifically to how I'm reading our recommendation for the change in definition of family. It would only really be preventing first years from being counted as kind of that definition of family. So I think sophomores, juniors, seniors, who I personally think is the kind of most of the students that are living off-campus would not be affected by this change of family, which I don't think a lot of folks want, but I think from your perspective, that, I don't know that it would change who's able to rent properties as students.
It would, and then to add to that, it would require that those students take that step of declaring residency, which may be an extra layer of their, of assessing that they want to contribute to this community. I'm thinking optimistically about that, but it's not that any, they, they have to declare residency. And that takes a year. Is that what you're, that's what you're saying?
Yeah. So I, I, as a response, I just don't know that it is going to decrease students living off-campus, from my perspective at least. But others might feel differently.
Okay. Well, I don't want to take up, you know, a lot of your time, but this would be better suited to bring up at the next meeting?
No, I think it would be something to respond to perhaps in a communication to our planning director if you have objections to the current draft, and especially what Nick said. And then we would read that before the next meeting. Of course, you can bring up anything at any meeting. I think you're asking for advice on how to do it. Yeah. And if it should be that the planning commission deems that we've taken your comments into consideration, but we don't believe that we can answer you perhaps in 100% satisfaction, then it's for you to bring it to the Borough Council who only, you know, we recommend this.
Yes.
But they will have their deliberation, they're legally required to have a hearing, right, John? There'll be a hearing. And at that time, and in the meantime, you might look at our previous minutes when we discussed this, and I don't remember what meeting that is, and how we came to that decision. That might help, and I could try to find out which minutes those are and find a way to get those to you. They're all online, too, though.
All right. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Okay, then, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved by Nick and seconded by Sarah. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And this motion, I mean, this, the motion passes, the meeting adjourns at 9:18 PM. Thank you all for coming. Happy St. Patrick's Day.